So we'll get started then. This is the Great Barrington Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, June 22nd. Pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and Governor Healy's March 29, 23, 2023 revised order extending remote participation by all members in any meeting of a public body. This meeting of the planning board would be conducted both in person and by remote participation to the greatest extent possible. Specific information and the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with the right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. For this meeting, members of the public and committee members may attend the meeting in person, or for those who wish to do so remotely, may may by following the instructions on this agenda. For those who are not in person, every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time by technological means. In addition, pursuant to MGL 7C 30A Section 20F, after notifying the chair of a public body, any person may make a video or audio recording of an open session of a meeting of a public body or may transmit the meeting through any medium. At the beginning of the medium, the chair shall at the beginning of the meeting, the chair shall inform other attendees of any such recordings. Any member of the public wishing to speak at the meeting must receive permission of the chair. The listings of the agenda items are those reasonably anticipated by the chair, which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. And finally, per Section 241.1 of the Town Code, except for procedural and housekeeping matters, town residents shall have the right to address a board on any item that requires a vote at a time before a board votes on that item. Such residents will be allowed as much time as the proponents are permitted to have.
Eileen had her hand up, but I'm fearing it's a meeting issue. Eileen, you're unmuted. Is there anything wrong?
No, I was raising my hand to let you know that I could hear you.
Jeremy, can you hear us?
Yes.
But we don't, we don't have any audio. Should that be the microphone?
Jeremy, can you hear us?
I can.
You can.
Can you?
But we can't.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'll drive down right now. I was just, I realized.
No, he's on mute.
Try it again, Jeremy.
Can you hear me now?
Okay.
I can hear him.
Eileen, can you let him know I'll be, I'll be right down? I just got back into town today and I realized I was late, so that's why I went off.
That's okay.
Thanks.
We can hear the audio.
Oh, you can hear me now.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, then I guess I'll stay home.
No problem. Thank you, Jeremy. All right, sorry about that, everyone. So we, we seem to have restored the audio. Thank you, Chris, for staying calm under pressure. We've read through all the items. Do we need to do a roll call with Jeremy being remote?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll do attendance. So Jeremy, you go.
Here. Not there.
Jonathan Hankin. Jackie King. Pedro Patana. Brandy Nelson here. Okay, so we have our full accompaniment aboard with Jeremy remote. So we don't have any formates this evening. None have been received. So we'll move on to the minutes of June 8th. Do we have a motion to approve as amended? Thank you, Jonathan. Do we have a second? Thank you, Malcolm. We have any discussion on the minutes or the revisions thereof?
It wasn't a question. Actually accurate.
Okay.
James Weldon in there as well.
Okay, yeah, that's fair. Did you go look it up? Because I didn't get a chance to do that.
So you changed Mr. Johnson to James Weldon.
Great. That was a really interesting add to that meeting. Thank you. All right, so we have a motion in a second. Jeremy, what's your vote?
Aye.
Jonathan. Malcolm. Pedro. Brandy. Aye. Okay, great. Thank you, guys. So our first revision of the minutes is a review and comment to the select board on whether the town should exercise or waive its Chapter 61A right of first refusal to purchase 22.5 acres, 59 acres of land at 206 Blue Hill Road, Parcel 3, Assessor Map 41. We have, we have Kate. Yes. Yes. Jonathan is recusing himself. Thank you, Jonathan. Kate, can you hear us?
I can. I am having trouble hearing Jonathan, but I think I hear everybody else on the board, so.
Jonathan recused himself, so he'll be quiet through this application.
Okay. Can you guys hear me fine?
We can. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm here tonight on behalf of Marion G. H. Gilliam, who owns 22.59 acres located at 206 Blue Hill Road in Great Barrington, which is Assessor's Map 41 Lot 3. He's under contract to sell that property and the the potential buyer does not wish to take the property under the current Chapter 61A designation. So we are asking the town to waive their first right of refusal. It was a bona fide offer. The offer was included in our materials and we're just looking for the waiver.
Okay. Did everyone have a chance to review the application? Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? The applicant service?
I do.
Okay. So our job is a review and comment. We don't have to make a recommendation of any sort, just a comment?
A recommendation will be fine. Sure.
Um, so if we have no questions for the applicant, do we have a motion to make a positive recommendation for the town to waive the Chapter 61A for this parcel sale?
Yes. I'm assumed.
Okay. Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Do we have some discussion?
I do. Just, just to clarify my home, the current owner enjoys the tax advantage because they did Chapter 61. The new owner doesn't want that tax advantage. So there's really no point to the town.
Do you, you've explained this to us a couple of times, right? It's more like if the parcel is contextually within an area that we've looked at in terms of maybe larger scale preservation and we think they should
But the reason
require that.
The reason for the right of first refusal, as I understand it, is that these people enjoyed the tax break for a certain period of time and, and now, you know, they've gotten lost as a taxpayer, presumably. And so, so the town has then has the right to survive that. Town should exercise that.
No, I agree with you. Do you have anything else to add?
No, Malcolm's right. The Chapter 61A program allows a landowner to enjoy a more beneficial assessment. In this case, it's assessed as agricultural land. There must be some agricultural use occurring. Some cases, it may be recreational land or forest land. Those are all portions of the Chapter 61A, Chapter 61 program. And in, you're right, in exchange for that advantageous assessment, the town gets a lien on the property that gives the town the right of first refusal. The town could exercise the right. It could assign its right to a nonprofit who would be possibly interested in conserving the property in its current use or in some sort of recreational or forest or agricultural use. Or the town can waive its right and allow the property to be taken out of the Chapter 61A program. You could see if if it was actively farmed, if it was in the town's interest to keep it in agricultural use, if there was a farmer to do the farming. If it was, as Brandy alluded, contiguous to other conserved land and it was in our interest and our rules and policies for open space recreation to keep it in that use. And if we have the funds to purchase it to match the purchase price, the town could step up and exercise the right. So those are the circumstances. We are. Yeah, it's entirely a thing to do with them.
I don't know how you would define farm, but in a person A owns it, person A wants to sell it.
I didn't know.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's, that's how this comes before us, is at the time of the real estate transaction. Yeah. The only time I can remember we even kicked around this in terms of not making a positive recommendation, I believe, was the land that was at the base of monument that was going to be the Williams pit that was going to be turned into a solar grid. That was one that we, we recommended it be reviewed, that the trustees didn't want that land because to put a solar farm there, you know, has some character in that. But this seems pretty straightforward. It's just a straight up. Are you supposed to be talking?
I can't hear him anyway.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, Jeremy, just before. Do you have any questions?
Um.
We have some questions for you, Jeremy.
Sideways.
Yes.
Yeah, um, I don't.
Okay, so your motion in a second. And so Jeremy, what's your vote?
I vote, I guess, a positive recommendation. Aye.
Brandy, aye. All right, thanks, Kate.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is board and subcommittee updates, issues and concerns. Discuss future joint meeting with select board and possible agenda items. So as we have done in the past, we have around this time of year, kind of customarily, had a joint meeting with the select board. A, to share information and B, to kind of get aligned on programmatic priorities where we can, you know, move shared interests forward. I did speak with Steve a couple of weeks ago and we talked about the July meetings of the select board possibly having a pre-meeting with the planning board. It's very hard to get us all to the same place at the same time, given everybody's multiple commitments. But it does seem like Monday nights before the regular select board meetings seem to provide some opportunity for us. So I'd like to start with, can we find a date? And I believe it's like words meetings are the 10th and the 24th. And so is there just given people's vacation plans and family obligations and work schedules? Are either of those dates better or worse for you guys? I can presently make both.
That's not true.
It's a.
Did we tentatively say, and then I was going to circle up with Steve? Okay. Well, so if we've got it for the 24th, then we will, we will confirm with Steve, the 24th it is. There, are they starting at 6:00 or 6:30? So we talked about one hour prior to.
Generally, they start at 6:00.
Okay. So we try for 5? Okay. Um, I think we wanted to do a couple of things as far as, you know, get, I told Steve we would try and put an agenda together, and so we were all going to be thinking about what, what those ideas need to include. Chris had in the past given us a synopsis of where we are implementation wise in terms of the master plan. And I too couldn't find anything more recent than what you sent us by email. I had it in my head that we had something. Yeah, it was from 2018. So we can, I guess we could start with the master plan. Excuse me. Um, did you, you sent us complete streets. So did you have
Such a good.
some thoughts on complete streets, though, like prioritizing that over other master plan items?
Oh, no. Complete Streets is on your agenda tonight. Jeremy and I believe board members asked for an update.
Okay.
So that's a separate item tonight.
Okay.
But, but you're right, master plan review is often a joint meeting topic. I sent you the last review that we did, which, which was in 2019.
Are you able to pull that up on the board? Because I
I am not.
You are not. Okay.
I'll try.
I know. That's why I was asking if you could possibly pull it up. This one is complete streets. Yeah, and, and so Chris wanted to cover that separately. You printed it? Okay, we need it on like, like D-size print so that we can read it. No, do you want to, did you look at it and have any ideas for what we wanted to talk? Like, do we want to stick with housing as a topic? Or do we want to talk about other issues more broadly? And I don't want to be like totally open-ended here. I think we do probably want to touch upon housing and what else we can do to try and encourage housing.
On me, I think there was a possibly pending in the subcommittee was whether the planning board, select board, housing subcommittee should continue. And I think Malcolm and Jeremy, that was there was a comment about the bylaw and membership on the Affordable Housing Trust. I don't really think that should be broached without the trustees also in the room. My recommendation, the master plan. You've, I believe Pedro sent to the board the select board's priorities, which the select board recently set their meeting last month. So that gives you an idea of, of what they are focusing their time and staff resources on.
Well, so I guess it wasn't really clear to me from that spreadsheet what they are focusing their resources on, because it looked more like what they had focused resources on, like high priority, mid priority, low priority, and then the column like in, like a lot is in progress. Yeah, and so.
All those high priority items are still high priority items.
Okay, and they're all in progress, so I don't. Yeah, so I don't know. I, I guess that seemed a little too open-ended to me to just go with their select board priorities. I don't know, actually.
Well, the, there were two, the two topics that were presented from the subcommittee. Where the, yeah, the transfer tax and and tax pay. Yes, the tax payment. And the last subcommittee meeting we had, Lee said that those things were being looked at and traced out by the assessor. And so hopefully we'll have some kind of data to discuss.
To follow up on. But that just, that whole thing was moved over to town to actually handle. So it goes in the assessor's office.
Yeah, I mean, basically the assessor has the, you know, term of assessing impact the tax payment or the the idea of the transfer tax, the thresholds of sales, whether it only applies over $100,000 or $1,000,000 or whatever. And try to figure what you have to be in terms of how much they're there to transfer a house plus how much the affordable housing trust actually gets penalized. I think it's penalized.
And also it was being, had it adopted or tried out by another town?
Right.
And wanted to check out whether.
Province town has both. And there are other towns that are that are proposing both initiatives, and both initiatives require that of course. Yes. Because it's a whole issue and it's on, it's not allowed unless it's specifically, it's not allowed by town unless it's specifically allowed by the state.
I mean, some of these things, I don't see what our role is other than awareness, right? They're like, like an action by the state legislature, we can certainly review what's proposed and send a recommendation that it be supported, but.
Well, or, or not. I mean, I, I think it's open for discussion whether we go for them. If it's based on the number of facts. It's a benefit or a cost and conflicts and penalties. Somebody has to pay for this.
But, okay, yeah, so I mean, there's no, there's nothing for us. I guess my goal for a joint meeting with the select board would be to inform the priorities our board would take in the coming year, right? And so in terms of things like waiting for an evaluation of assessor data, I don't know that that is even going to pan out within the term for the, the amount of time we've got available to us. You know, if it does, it, so be it, but we'll make room for it.
But I mean, it might be something. I mean, we're not, we're not the act of, we're not the press.
So if we're looking then at the priorities that were set by the select board, there's not a lot in here that is planning board related. Like, I see planning, but is that more planning department? Where it says planning, because like Cook's Garage, how can we be helpful there? Do we need to look at zoning that differently to allow the redevelopment?
I think it's a question to, to broach with the select board. You know, it's, it's a time for the two boards to, to converse and, you know, the select board may see trends, questions, opportunities that you've not seen and vice versa. You may see a reason to focus on X that they don't know about. And you don't usually get together to talk about these things in an open session like this, so I think that's time. So they may say, well, this, this really seems like a planning board priority and you can take that up. It's a time for you to inform each other and ask each other questions, I think.
Is this a time for us to get proactive about what we once we have them, or we leave them and formulate it and bring it up and just discuss with them?
We have an hour. So I think yes, but we have an hour. And so I think we want to be targeted in what we're going to do. We, we tend to have more like wide-ranging discussion about a variety of topics. And they run their board more like, like decision-based, I think. They seem to not deliberate the way we deliberate. So just different philosophies of.
I was just trying to, I'm playing around the edges of what this unit is, but I've also been thinking that I met with Michael Wise today and we just talked about master plan and the process that went into the making of 2013. And now that we're coming calendar-wise up to the 10th anniversary of issuance of that master plan. Are we going to think about redoing it this year and that is going to be and is something that we talk perhaps with the board about?
I think that is on the list here. I mean, that's why Chris sent us that 2019 assessment where we are on priorities and we probably need to update that. But, but in terms of what we've been talking about in other meetings about engaging in some community conversations, I do think that's a prelude to the master plan update at some point. You know, we want to start having those communities.
What was interesting talking to Michael about this is just talk about the process that they went, which started forming a committee and then having working groups that are on specific topics and then holding large meetings, the kickoff meeting in the fire department and having community conversations. And then after all of that and writing, coming back together in the fire station. But we're not having to do that scale of activities, but some of the activities are good and, you know, about for outreach activities. So if that's something we want to do, maybe this is a time to tee it up with select and say, let's talk about timelines. Is that appropriate or not?
Well. You're, go ahead, Jeremy.
Well, it's, isn't it, isn't master plan our deal? I mean, we can, we don't really need the select board's permission to to start that process. It would be more just informing them, you know, or if they have input into, but I think, but I think that's right. I mean, you could call, and you could even call that outreach that we want to do is, it could even be pre-master plan. I think, you know, master plan has gotten talked about a lot. And it, it's thrown around a lot. And so maybe the public's more interested in having input this time. The greater public. And so I don't know if we want to use that as a way to try to attract people in the outreach that we're going to do around housing anyway. Housing and zoning.
If we're going to outreach, maybe the first place we should outreach though is the select board.
In the context of where are we now in terms of implementation of the master plan, right?
Yeah.
We can, we can start it, but we can't go anywhere without buying a lot of lots.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You know, Jeremy, I understand your point that the planning board under general law is, is the board that's charged with doing a master plan. But
Yeah.
in practical fact, the planning board cannot do
No.
a real effective master plan without community average.
Yeah, without everyone, yeah.
So just don't, I wouldn't want it to be taken that way if
No.
I, I would only approach a master plan update, which is a tremendous lift, with the full support of both boards.
Yeah.
15.
That's huge.
So I think my experience, and Chris, please tell me what your experience is, but my experience is 10 years is a little early to be updating the master plan unless we were missing some like, you know, really big shift in demographics or, you know, like some significant influence that occurred in our community. A review is something we should do on an annual basis. And I think we're really fortunate to have Chris in particular, who's really driven implementation on a lot of this with the support of a ton of people. But, you know, you've been instrumental in helping us implement the master plan. I think we're very far along in it, but I think an item with the select board should be where are we now? You know, if, if we haven't updated that list since 2019, when I read through it my, my old one, which I think was 2018, it, it seemed like we'd made a lot of additional progress on master plan items. And so what are the things that are up and like, and maybe we focus there. And once we check those off, which may take two or three or four or five years, then we would be talking about a master plan update, reconstituting a committee and, and starting that process. But to have early conversations about select areas, if housing is one of them, there's no reason we shouldn't engage the community, I don't think. But, but in terms of like saying we're going to update the master plan, I think we should pump the brakes a little. Yeah.
But at the same time, you're feeling where we are at 10 years, it seems to be a good benchmark. And that document has to be updated.
The review, the review document. Yes.
So then, I mean, that's a good exercise. And then you're seeing some things that are just not happening or don't happen.
And maybe not valid anymore. Right. Maybe things have shifted. Yeah.
Chris, can I ask in terms of a digital version of that update, does that not exist anymore? That spreadsheet you had put together or?
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I emailed.
Yeah, that's what I, that's what I emailed to you.
You sent it to us as a PDF and when I asked if you could put it on screen, you said no. So I wondered if.
I don't, I don't have it with me tonight.
I just wondered if there was a, like if we'd lost file and you will need to hand it or something.
No.
Okay, I just thought there was a technical reason.
Tonight, at this instant, I cannot put it on screen.
Yeah.
Laminate those, yeah.
Yeah, anyway, okay. So, okay, so I, I think it's easy, low hanging fruit discussion around, well, not easy, but a low hanging fruit discussion around subcommittee for housing and Malcolm, I assume you've got some, um, some thoughts there.
Yeah, I, I, I like to, um, you know, present our, one of our latest sheet of action against, none of which actually can be taken by the subcommittee. Uh, so, you know, is, is this it? Um, or, you know, is there still a role for the subcommittee? What is it? Come up with this, here's, here's what it is.
Is that something that you could potentially share out as content to go with an agenda? Okay, all right. So if we do housing subcommittee. Sure. Do you guys have a, a subcommittee meeting between now?
Jeremy, we do, right?
We have one, yeah. I, I think it's this coming, um, is it this coming Tuesday? I, is that right, Malcolm? Or is it still left over on my calendar from something else?
Yeah, it is this Tuesday at five. So we will review it, we'll discuss the.
Yeah.
You know, what's exactly.
Okay. And then if we review the select board priorities that mentioned planning and try and understand if the select board actually needs our help or if that's to do this for, for Chris and his staff.
But I mean, you may see opportunities that you, you can help guide jump in and let the select board know.
Okay, we can review that and then a master plan review. And I think if we do those three items, that's an hour easily, right?
What do you think?
You or me, I would not be bringing up master plan items. I mean, especially about what this committee wants to accomplish. And I can say from my point of view, things I've been thinking about is senior zoning reform, you have been thinking a lot about lot coverage means and relationship to setbacks. I think process, development process is something that you should continue to discuss, particularly when it comes to housing. We've had a minor success at town meeting, but it's minor still and I think we need more. You know, we've done a ton of work on housing. And I think, you know, it's a you know, the, the development process itself is something that should be addressed and that's a very important item discussed with the select board. And then, you know, I, I would like to, to see how that process can play out on a section of town that we as a planning board decide is worth uh, implementing a more use or reform the version of the current process. Particularly in my opinion, along the corridor, seven from South Main all the way up to I always forget the name of the, uh, the bed and breakfast, like at the intersection of one eighty-three. Get all of that there. Anyway, those are, you know, the things that I've been thinking about, I think we should take up as a committee as a board and for discussion and maybe just throw these things out to the select board, if they react, if they've even thought about it, if they have any idea. You know, the, the route seven thing is, is to me a no brainer, you know? Focusing development along Route Seven preserves our open space. A focus of development in the areas that provide public housing or public transit. It focuses development on areas that can support without heavy infrastructure costs. Or I mean, we know this already, we've just not never really dug into it. As a board, I've brought it up several times with you guys. And I think, you know, at this point, I'm not sure how much further we can push zoning and housing. I think it's.
Well, I think it's an education. And bringing the response to passing that approved by right in the U development, that's, um, that I could hear in the room and take a breath when that was said. And it's just like, why are we supporting them? How can we talk about that? But that, that's, we can talk about that further, but how do we get the public to understand the interpretation value of and the whole issue of compliance. I mean, this is, this is one of the reasons that triggered my wanting to housing forums to discuss by right to other private partnerships for affordable housing. And also me taking back another conversation, clients versus first enforcement. I mean, what teams do different action acts, things that we're trying to do. So we do lose by right, do we have any team? What is, what's the team like? Do you not, what do we think about this kind of thing? Yeah, I think that's all. You know, Pedro, when you're talking about this, I think here you've talked about a lot, but what about the public and how can you go large?
And I, I think that would all be good to talk to, with the select board about. And, uh, it matters because these conversations will take resources. Um, and the select board and the planning board can help provide those resources or at least the direction so that staff is pulling in the right direction, the to achieve the at least the conversations, if not the end goals that the boards want to achieve. So it's important that if that's a goal of this board to have further conversations about housing, zoning reform, development reform, development process, parking, lot coverage, whatever those are. Um, if the select word says, yeah, that's, that all sounds good, then we can start to devote some resources to it. I will say that, uh, staff did apply to VRPC for technical assistance this year for Stockbridge Road. For additional stockers of work. We didn't get that primarily because BRPC thought that the ask was just too much for, for them to take on for their staff. They stand willing to support us if we can get additional grant funds from other sources and make it a a, a larger package, but it, it was just too big for them to undertake. So um, we've not yet been able to identify those additional resources, but hopefully we can.
Can you comment where you apply or what is to take on?
Well, I'll I will share that. I think I did share that application with you, but I, I will send it. So anyway, point is getting, getting the boards aligned, um, helps to align staff, resources and other resources. Budget resources if needed in the next fiscal year, for example, to accomplish these things. Those are all good things to talk about.
Jeremy, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I, I think I have, um, a discussion before the joint meeting about, um, where are we going to wait until after that and use that meeting? To kind of start to plan out, um, what some of our, um, tasks for this session are going to be, um, between now and, uh, town meeting.
But I think we're, we are beginning that conversation and have begun that conversation, but
Yeah.
you know, we're, that's part of what we're having the discussion about right now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
So we're not going to, we're not going to wait until after the select board meeting to kind of start to.
My thought is, and, and Pedro, I'd love to get your response to it, um, that that there are certain priorities that this board has that are really like lateral to what the select board's doing. And I think it's a nice to share, but not a need to have permission. Uh, it's like, it's more just for information purposes and, and some of like development process and, and zoning reform. I mean, Pedro, aren't we doing that all the time every year? It seems like we're always trying to chip away at, in an incremental fashion, making the process more efficient and trying to create housing opportunities. And we can, I think we can certainly circle back with the board and say, are you guys getting any feedback that we should be aware of that there's concern in the community or particular emphasis in the community around these things? But, I mean, I think we are doing this, are we not, in your opinion?
I mean, we've done it. I hope so. That's true. I don't know. Put people on copybook here, but it took, you know, three years to get this done. It's slow moving and I think, you know, Malcolm and I get into the discussion. Being the discussions, I don't know. I think that the board is always thinking about it. I think we're I don't think it's some part of our agenda that I'm, I'm not percent sure that it is.
I think you don't understand at all. So you and actually have a separate conversation because I, I really am like almost flabbergasted that you're bringing this up, zoning reform, because that feels like what we're doing all this time.
No.
Don't you recall when I was talking about? About the way that ours actually works. I don't think it's the time to get into that discussion. But there's some things that are just kind of contradictory, some things that are, that don't make sense. Especially when, you know, we talk about things like density. The way ours is any work. It's a very dense zone. That's a whole different thing, right? Talking about development process, I mean, I'm talking about you know, special permits, we're talking about reviews, the way reviews are done and the impact that that has on development. I think that we can reform there. I think it's since it's been going on for very, very long. Limited, limited success, particularly on housing front. Because of the and I think you have evidence of the Houston project that we've lost. A new project since.
So just how, how, let's keep just getting, so projects we lost, the Mandel Street project was not. I don't know that that's attributed to the process that we had control over. The land purchase isn't on our process.
It's, it's the process allowed to, for example.
But every, each one of our things. Given enough interest of the other.
But I think, but I think what Pedro's getting at is, um, so, you know, if if we have particular goals and the zoning and the process, um, prevents those goals from being you know, realized, then I think that's what he's getting at. And I think that's kind of an interesting discussion because I mean, zoning in general, it's really about, you know, and our process is really about limiting it. Limiting development or, or being able to control the development that happens and you know, which then prevents if our goal is really, you know, our goal is to create more housing than, you know? But to what Jackie was saying is, uh, you know, I, I, I I don't think the public's there. Um, I don't think the public, at least at this point, is interested in by right development. I mean, we saw how hard it was to get that just, you know, when it was really narrow and it was only when developers were providing affordable housing that they got, you know, that they got this by right development. And even there, it was like, it just squeaked by. And so, um, you know, I mean, I think starting to have that discussion where, you know, are, like, how much do we really want to realize our goals and are these really our goals? You know, and this is what's limiting those goals from happening because unless we're going to do it ourselves as a town, we don't have control, right? And so it has to be developers to do it. And so, you know, I, I mean, I think Pedro's, you know, I mean, Pedro's is pushing, um, that we're not able to achieve our goals as a town. Um, I'm just wondering if we really want to achieve our goals as a town? Or do we want to control it? From the conversation I hear that happens at town meeting, you know, I'm, I'm not convinced that the goals we talk about, we really, really want.
We need a collective community, we.
We, we being the collective community.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. What I'm hearing is part is incremental change. Stepping back against reflections or thinking about how that zoning is maybe be defining what it might be the goals are. I think it's more in a philosophy um, understanding. Like if I'll go back to just thinking about my favorite book that we've talked about, parking. And, um, it's just that unintended consequence. And maybe there's time, I'm looking at some of the definitions of pillars of what some lies on. Eternally probably.
I'm, I'm not sure what this has to do with our job, but I, I'm not sure, but more of the select. Yeah, definitely. I don't think this meeting is about. Well, that's my understanding is that the meeting's about communicating what our board is doing. Well, then I, I think we should probably agree as a board, which I don't think we can get. How much you don't, we should do. And I think have more discussions as a board before we present it to the select. As a, as a planning approach. Yeah.
In terms of.
We have principles, we don't have any proposals. I mean, it's specific proposal.
In terms of zoning reform and development process. I mean, I suppose we could take a, uh, an intermediate step. I mean, I know you don't want an intermediate step, but we could take an intermediate step of of, of gathering feedback from the, from the select board as to, you know, what was their impression? And I, I sad that I missed town meeting because it sounds like some sort of like earthquake happened at town meeting and the public became like concerned more so than normal. No, it was just a normal.
Interview.
Interview.
I, I think it's fine to, you know, let the board know that these are some of the questions that you're thinking about, even if there's no consensus on this board yet. You know, it may be of interest.
Um, as to compliance and enforcement, that's a discussion we've had for a long time about it's frustrating as the planning board that we set conditions up and there's not capacity maybe for enforcement. That I think is something the select board can direct resources towards uh, making sure the building department has adequate staff to enforce things.
It's like outside of our purview at some point and, um, I'm not aware of whether it's constructors, you see, going back and saying, okay, you've been in here for two years. What's working, what's not working? Has this been a good development, a useful development? What's missing in this process? As people we've been working to develop for the house before. I mean, there's a feedback group here that I think would be very valuable. Not just to do it, but see what's working in the bodies. But that, is that us or is that the the manager is properly before, is it the judge? But that gets into that fuzzy so who's really mine to shift to be able to spot the issue.
I mean, I, you and I had talked about that and I like the idea of making an inquiry to the, you know, the residents, the owners, operators, the people that are responding to needs in, um, these affordable housing communities to find out if they're working or not, because, you know, do you want to replicate the zoning capacity in those areas if that's not working? Um, and if it is working, yeah, we probably want to create more opportunities and see.
And I was looking at this project on Ford Lane Road and thinking about let's say whoever's signing that. Yeah.
That's habitat.
And I'm thinking about, well, that would be a great model because one of the things they say. And I'm thinking about, well, that would be a great model because one of the things they say is going to have landscape, system, process. Okay, really interesting. This is actually working and what they say there's follow up, true follow up with living there. And that's actually a good model and maybe we want to push that and replicate. Or maybe it's, there's no follow up and we should be watching the follow up. These are questions that I have to spell. Process like continuing, not just building and walking away. But getting extensive, how successful was this project versus that project and we have a lot of things that we joined the first time and second time. And how do we know if it's really for the people listening and for the community? Also, can you respond to this?
I mean, that, that's almost something you could, you could potentially do by survey, right? You could survey.
You could use survey, whatever, you know?
Yep. It's really, I mean, I, I can't say I have time to do interviews one on one with people, but maybe there's some volunteers. Would be able to do that. Um, okay, I'll, I'll, anything else, Jeremy?
No, I mean, that, that kind of survey sounds interesting. You know, developer and then residents and, you know, and the managers and, and community, I guess, as well. Um, how, you know, how that affects, how those developments affects the butters and you know, small community and greater community as well. Be great to get that kind of feedback. And then also too, I mean, and with developers is, is, you know, I mean, I guess having discussions or we can survey on like capacity. You know, I'm with the habitat development, it seems like one of the big issues is habitats capacity. Um, meaning they're like what they can do and who, um, and how many people they can find, um, as residences or, or residents, um, or owners for these units that they're building. Anyway, um, so that kind of stuff too, um, you know, um, I mean, it seems like the demand is really high. But what, but where is the demand? You know, it seems like, wow, homeownership would be great for affordable housing, but is the demand really low? Um, I don't know, anyway.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know. And did we all see, um, I think Eagle had an article on it. It was on Sunday, it was over the weekend, right? On the community housing survey data that was put out? No.
How to reach reform is published annually by the National Low Income Housing Coalition.
And that around, it was really interesting. Um, okay, I will take um, the notes from tonight and I will endeavor to put an agenda together and bring it back to the board.
If I can just, if I don't down on what Jeremy said, I mean, I think what concerns me is that all the work that we've done on this committee is great, but that it's really hard to implement. So that's what I'm talking, I'm talking to them. The development process.
I've always seen our role as like setting the table. There's, there's a limit to what we can do and it'd be nice if we were limitless. But I don't know that we can do everything you want to do, but we can try and we can look at it.
You, you may be limited and maybe the select board is the next step, but so it's important to talk about. You can all send me ideas and I'll try to compile them with Brandy and Pedro and put together a list for your discussion at your next meeting.
And, and I mean, I think overall these, these joint meetings are good, especially from our point of view. I mean, it'd be good to have real support from the select board and the things that we bring to town meeting. And, you know, I mean, I, I think it affects, it affects our board more than like our support of what they're doing affects their board, but but I mean, I think it's, it's helpful.
All right. So Jeremy, we'll start with you in terms of, um, subcommittee updates and issues or concerns.
Oh, I, I had another thing while we're talking about, um, can, I'm sorry, when we're talking about, um, things, uh, for this coming cycle. Um, can we, can we make sure that coal housing is on that, that whole idea of, um, coal housing? Cause I know these, that construct has some interest in duplicating that, uh, what they've done with the, um, uh, windflower, right? Windflower, windfall. Um, and it's only, it's like they can only very narrowly do that right now. Which is basically ins, you know, taking over old ins and B and Bs. Um, and yeah, I, I, we, I thought we had some interesting discussions around that, but it's, but it's, oh, but I think it's a lot of, it's going to take a lot of work to get that to town meeting or something like that.
And are we sure we can't achieve the same sort of goal with zoning we already have in place?
Uh,
You've looked at it.
They couldn't, they couldn't.
They, I mean, they yeah, I mean, they can't duplicate it without already have a permitted. Right? Is, am I right, Chris? They couldn't duplicate that without having an already existing permitted in.
It was, it was a unique, the unique situation.
Yeah.
As well. So are they operating under, under the B and B?
I, I'd have to look. Not prepared to answer that. Technical question.
It would be worthwhile to look and see, uh, you know, what the road laws are, at least parts of constructs, that what, what they see is.
Yeah, I think it, I think it would be.
We require people to live in a unit.
Yeah.
Thank you.
As opposed to a, as opposed to a room with a bathroom with a shared cooking facilities and, yeah. And so I think our existing zoning doesn't really work for that. And, but it seems like it's an interesting, it's an interesting type of housing which can, you know, I mean, we have trouble keeping our youth and it's, it seems like a like a great starter union, unit, um, you know, potentially the rents could be low and, you know, young people could live together and you know, and work in town or whatever. Um, I, 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 I thought it was amazing, um, as a different type of housing that, you know, Great Barrington could offer for, you know, affordable workforce, that sort of thing.
Rest completely without, we have any, do we have zoning on?
Potentially. Yeah, we always have to wait until.
They wait until the check. But September would take together.
But you know, this would be one of those, if you really want to do something, there's.
No, I don't think so. The, the process is long, you know, we, there's a lot of steps we have to undertake, we have to do. You know, we do our investigation and then we have to do public meetings and, um, we have to go to select board and a special meeting has a lot of costs associated with it. So I wouldn't want to just be like one item. Unless there was like something.
I was thinking of, uh, we'd be breaking up.
Well, we don't know. We may need to come down next week.
Yeah.
And, and I don't know, we might do a simple tweet to the, to the rooming house, uh, uh, by law or something, but we need to find out what that tweet is.
Yep. Jerry, did you have any other, um, order separating?
Um, no, um, yeah, we brought up that we're meeting next Tuesday. Um, we do have a meeting set for, I'm sorry, just my phone around. Um, we do have a meeting set for C C P C and why am I not being able to remember that day? Chris, do you have that date off the top of your head?
I do know.
Uh, um.
So upcoming and.
Yeah.
Visiting your.
Yeah, it's in July. Um, I'm sorry, if I don't, if I don't have it, I, I have nothing more than that. We have the meeting and if I don't have it before the end, I'll send it around what that date is.
Well, thank you.
They own that in forever. So this is kind of like, oh, hi. What should, what are we supposed to pay or what do we need to do or do we? Harry Carey, I don't know. But I think it needs to be.
Since, since you're, um, talking, any, um, issues or concerns that haven't been raised thus far that you want to.
I just didn't see what you were.
It's, it's, I got a little problem here. Hey, Jeremy.
The only thing I was, I've been thinking about was when you had to remember a few weeks back, I was talking about sparing his income, the price of housing people paying. And this discussion with there was a construct and there was a pressure housing. Then there was a C T. They all seem to not be interested in pursuing a discussion with state legislature because they just felt it was too difficult. That it wouldn't accomplish anything. But as you guys know, stubborn mean. So that's active. I wouldn't go draft a letter and show it to this committee. Turnover to Tom at R P C to turn over to Austin. Boston, I'm wondering if you guys consider reviewing the letter and then if you like the letter and see if it says a worthwhile pursuit if you're really like or, or dying a letter.
I would.
Maybe it'd be nice.
I stay.
And, you know, in, in doing so, I'll, I'll put it together, but you know, the, the one thing that Tom recommended is that you just stated, the state issue, but also that I offer some solution or some. So if anybody can find a way, a good way to measure price of income, the price of real estate to affordability rather than income to affordability. That's the question. Do you, well? Take that. So what are the prices of a home? And you take, what? I don't know how to do the mortgage calculation. So the pack, if the median price of the house now is six fifty, what would it take to get a mortgage for that? How much would a person earn to qualify for that? Shouldn't that the measure?
But isn't that the measure thirty percent of what people earn? That would be what they need for housing. Yeah, but I mean, they can pay for housing, what thirty percent, I mean, it all comes down to income sooner or later. You know, calculation, I swear, I think it does.
I think this sounds like something you could dive into once you maybe see a letter. Like, I think we're going off agenda.
But if you have a bank right now. Yeah. Oh, I'm a banker, we could talk.
Does, does Habsburg offer this kind of technical assistance?
You know, this just came up. I, I know what Pedro's talking about, but nobody else really does. And I think we should have it specifically.
As an agenda item.
Yeah, I mean, I keep talking about this idea of, you know, a, a different way to calculate, you know, who can qualify for, uh, for for assistance.
Right, of course.
But I, I, I don't know where you're going specifically. That would be. I'm sure.
Any other issues or concerns? Other questions?
I don't know, personally, it's only.
Math.
Um, uh, Monday, I'm meeting with, uh, Tom, who started learning about the chairman job, you know, he sees that part of that, I'm actually going to join him in December or March.
Mm hmm.
And I gave him more listening and speaking.
Mm hmm.
That's, um, it's going to be an opportunity, I think, uh, to, um, to put a South County flavor even more. I mean, you know, Chris is, uh, Chris is truly a great representative from the R P C. He's saying a bunch of things and he gets things done through the R P C for us. But I think, uh, I'll be able to represent.
Do you know if there's going to be any, um, connectivity with the new like rural communities are because it's, you know, we are, we are far, far western miles and we are like, we don't think we're the epitome of rural, but if you're in Dedham, they think we are, they don't even know where Braverton is.
They think you're Yankee State.
Worcester is not.
I know, I'm dealing with here, so.
Yes.
How much voice can we have? You know, we're big geography, little population, big geography creates a whole bunch of unique challenges in terms of transportation.
There were, uh, couple initiatives to have this person come to and speak at a commission meeting and also subcommittee. So, uh, you know, the, the subcommittees are also talking about the same thing. Everybody's putting a lot of advance on, on this because it, it's pretty exciting actually having somebody with the voice back from Boston who spoke to more issues.
Are we back to Thursday dinners? You're gonna have fifth Thursday dinners?
Uh, it hasn't been brought up since February, then it's. That's actually bigger. Yeah, we're gonna discuss.
Was it a good?
I would say the answer, yeah.
Yeah, and there's a new year's.
Yeah.
Again, we push it, you know? We'll save you one of those or one of those.
We'll say this about more, but this is part of the reason why I'm applying. Using the letter and with this idea because it's really engaged, that's actually been, I mean, we've been to the R P C twice, two or meetings. Two, you know, I think. And every week was Olympics a couple of weeks ago or a month ago. So you seem to be feeling this part of the world.
Right. Jonathan? For community issues, thanks for that.
He means more committee responsibility.
He's like semi-retired. All right, well, uh, we, we, we'll find a job for you then, maybe community surveying, housing development.
I want to. I'll take it. If you're gonna interview people, I'll give you.
Uh, okay, so Lake Mansfield Improvement Task Force, we had a meeting, um, this past week on Tuesday night. And, um, the good, good news is that the, uh, lake improvements, the, um, parking area and the roadway improvements, um, to, to lay out the the tr- trail connector, um, are basically designed and ready to go to bid. Um, the town with Chris's leadership has, um, pursued some grant funds. We don't know yet if we're getting those grant funds, but if we do, um, looks like we'll have construction potentially, um, beginning in the late fall of this year. Very exciting and we'll want to do some more community engagement and outreach around, um, that in the coming months. So we'll be uh, so listen for updates on this. The entire town, yeah, we'll get people from all over. Um, I think there's, I think there's like concentric circles of interest. Um, you know, there are the people that live right around the lake and they're very interested because they're like, that's their day to day reality, right? And then there are people that are regular users of the lake that recreate in and around the area. And then, um, then there are visitors, obviously, because we don't have a, like a Great Barrington resident sticker that allows you to exclusively use like public. Um, and, um, and there are people that come, there's, um, immigrant communities that come and spend a lot of time, you know, picnicking and swimming and so there's a, a large user group of the lake and, um, there has been over the years, was it been? And there has been over the years, was it been like 14 years? Fifteen years? How long has that task force been in existence?
Oh, at least 15 years.
Been on it for like six or seven. It's a long time coming, so to get to this point. So I think that's, it's the good to see this kind of progress being made, but there'll be some substantial physical changes. And so the big driver is to improve lake water quality while maintaining the recreational character of the area. And so that is sort of the dual objective of the improvement plan for the parking area. So what?
There's been so much trash.
We walk there all the time and we're always picking stuff up. Yeah, it's wild. I don't know why people litter, it makes me angry. Have a little pride in your community.
Could have a community task force.
There are, I mean, there are definitely, first of all, I think the town has put garbage receptacles in recycling containers there. So it's easy to push the garbage in one of these receptacles. Those people are probably not going to make any progress, but I'm not optimistic of that at all. Um, so that's it for Lake Mansfield. The, the only other two things that I wanted to raise were, I've recently been doing some work around battery storage for solar facilities. It's an area that is growing and Massachusetts is trying to provide more opportunity for energy storage so that we have more energy reliability. Well, yeah, I mean, you need to have storage of the energy you're producing, right? And we've already developed a number of solar arrays. And if there was a desire to add energy storage near them, it didn't look like our zoning code can accommodate that. And so. Because what I've read so far is that the interpretation at the state level is that it's not considered utility. It doesn't, it's not defined. And so if it's not defined, then it's not permitted, right?
Again, something to talk about.
Something to talk about. No, you, I'm thinking large scale, like these. But like Chris said, something we can put on an agenda, but I, I'd like to have the discussion. Yeah. Potentially in the future, improved sustainability in our community. Um, the other thing is just, I'm being irked right now by property owners who have benefited from social permits that aren't maintaining their properties. People have any kind of like nuisance property. Yeah, so. There's a number and we don't need to name names, but I just wondered if, if that is something we want to have a conversation about, whether. Yeah, I agree, that might be a topic. I'm not, I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to drive at, like, if your neighbor doesn't mow their lawn, not at all. What I'm talking about are, are bigger properties that are prominent in the community and that are lighted and, and, you know, they're potentially. There's, there's a number, I can think of like five or six right off the top of my head, so. And that's just in like this area.
Yeah, this is interesting because it kind of goes to the process. Part, because when the process reaches us, the person proposing the project to us is at the sort of risk level of their process. So they're showing us the fair sort of minimum fare in hardly any detail whatsoever. And they're doing that because they're obviously not going to come in to an uncertain process with a full-fledged plan, having spent, you know, tons of money with professionals developing it for them. And that we really want to implement, right? And so, I mean, the one, you know, the one project that was interesting to me as well before my time is the church here on Main Street. That where it became, you know, there were a lot of anomalies to what I saw from what was proposed to design advisory at the time. Yeah, to what was finally built, that's right. And so, yeah, I mean, this, this is a process discussion in my opinion, as much as anything. I think if we wanted to see finished plans and plans that might have more forcibility than any of them. Then we should be able to see plans that are fleshed out. But no developers are going to come in with more because they're not going to spend what it takes to get that done.
I, I, I think that, that there's a lot to unpack in there. On the agenda at some point, but it goes to a lot of the things we were talking about earlier as well in terms, not only of enforcement, not only of process, but enforcement.
Okay, so Chris, I'm not going to name names, but when somebody comes for us, the property's not near development, but the yard, the land around it. Gone to, I know my bank is large and I'm just wondering. If our neighbor, I would worry that they were just letting it go to speed.
Yeah, something.
For them to kind of like make a.
That, that's a good question because that's one thing, you know, we have not, in my experience, traditionally included a condition that says. And during the time period where you develop your detailed plans, you will maintain your property, you know, consistent of how your neighbors are maintaining their property now. Or your property will not become an attractive nuisance or, you know, whatever it may be. We, by knowledge, we have not.
It could be that there's.
I'm not naming any particular properties, I'm just saying there's a number in the community that are attractive.
You know, it could be that there's sections of town where we.
Yeah, maybe, I mean, I think it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's a problem for, for neighbors, you know, too. Um, okay, uh, town ownership for.
Oh, wait, oh, so I have.
You were first in this.
I know, I know. And I wasn't ready, so. I got it, some times it's bad. So Tuesday, July 11th at five o'clock is the CPC meeting.
Okay.
And, and so, you know, I, we're going to start to, I don't know when our deadline for our plan for the coming cycle will be. But if anybody has any input or if the board as a whole wants to have input into that. That'll be coming up. And, you know, just to review the things that we can put in the plan, so we can put, if we have particular goals or particular things that we'd like to see. The, the, we can also put in the plan if the, or we are, I'm sorry, the CPC can decide if they want to. Restrict funds for the given year to a particular thing beyond the 10%, 10%, 10% in the three categories. So if you all could think about that and if you have any. If we want, if you have any individual comments or if we want to take it up as a board.
They're required.
Fantastic.
Required to give 10% to each category, right?
Yes. But one of the big powers that the CPC has is that they can decide if they want to do more to a particular category beyond the 10% which is required. You have to hold the 5% for, there's another 5% you have to hold for, until, to see if it's used for administrative stuff. But, but beyond that.
Are they currently, currently using more than, excuse me, like they're using more than 10% for, for at least housing?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I mean, it generally falls somewhere around the, it's, it's pretty evenly distributed. I mean, not completely, when you look at the history of Great Barrington's CPC or CPA expenditures. But, you know, but year by year, you can decide like, okay, this year we want to do this or whatever. I mean, there are some commitments that we have, so we, you know, we have, we bonded Memorial Field, so that's a commitment that the town has. So, so we can't, you know, and, and then we can't, you know, of course, reneg on whatever other commitments we have that we've already made. But, yeah, it's just something to think about. We have the discussion every year and I'm a big proponent of, you know, well, let's say, let's put aside this much for affordable housing and, you know. And then if we don't spend it in that particular year, that particular amount of money that we don't spend will be, gets put into, you know, the kitty to only be spent on affordable housing. But anyway.
Anything else?
No. Thank you.
Well, as I mentioned earlier, at least a few of you requested an update on where we are with the implementation of the town's 2018 Complete Streets Plan. Uh, so I did provide that to you via email and gave you a few printouts here tonight. What you have is the list, the final list of priority projects that was in the Complete Streets Plan and that are. At least for DOT, eligible for DOT Complete Streets Grants. So there were. Total of 18 projects listed. On that prioritization plan. We've been doing, I think, a very good job at achieving those. Uh, the first one, two, three, four, five of those have had, if not complete construction, at least some discussion and are in design. So the main street sidewalk extension disconnect is done, we shared use path. We seven towards CHP's campus is completed. Randy mentioned that Mansfield, that should hopefully be under construction this year. South Main Street, from the police station south to East Procure Center. There is discussions to add sidewalks on both sides, bike lanes. So that is in preliminary designing now. The rail trail in Husatonic, which is out behind the cemetery, is in design now and already partially funded. And there's other projects you can see through here that, that staff has been working on. If we get a grant for West Avenue, we'll set up a sidewalk, that's what we asked to be later this, this month or next month. So, you know, we have a grant also to supplement this work for including bus stops around the town. Particularly accessibility of buses for them. Waiting, you know, waiting for a bus. Bringing, actually from high to shelter for you. So anyway, a lot of, a lot of projects here, we are implementing them. And with grants through our capital improvement budget, I think we're doing a pretty good job.
Chris, yeah, I was gonna say, no, I can. It looks like there's.
Yeah. I, I'm saying, yeah, as in I, I understand your, your point. The, the middle columns there that say Complete Streets Funding Request, those dollar amounts had to be added when we initially compiled this. So that it was, it's almost a function for DOT. At the time, they were going through the statewide Complete Streets Plan, they were trying to get an idea of what towns were prioritizing and how much, what level of funding they should be thinking about at the state level. We were asked to put the dollars. Potential dollars. And it says funding requested, it's not really a request, it was kind of a ballpark estimate. So don't, don't let that fool you into thinking that we have requests. It's still on the list, nothing's been designed, nothing's been.
Hi.
Jerry?
Um, so I have a couple of things. One of the things, Chris, it's not, it's not in there and so with Complete Streets, like what? Should we, should we review that and conduct another Complete Streets? What, what was that process called? Was it like a survey?
Well, it was, it was a community planning process.
Yeah.
You know, something for you can discuss and.
Because.
Would be a planning process that would take some resources. And if, I think if this board and the select board agree that it may be worthwhile to review this list again and take some off, add some moves, something to discuss.
Because we had a little, over the pandemic, we had a little bit of experience with, you know, having. Having dining in the streets, right? And one of the things with Complete Streets was to, like, construct a bunch of traffic stuff in the middle of the street. And I know the big one that we have is not really in our purview because it's a state road, which was with Stockbridge Road. But. That's one thing. And then, and then another thing, I, so I was just in Hawaii and they seem super fond of humps in the road as a way of calming traffic. And I know, again, we only have, like, we can only do that in town and I, I, and I, you know, I mean, I guess it's superintendent thing, like, how easy are those humps to, to plow? What they were is they're about, I don't know, about. Seven, 10 foot wide, like extend all the way across the road and you can go over them pretty comfortably. At least the ones that they had, they had them on highways where you could go over them pretty comfortably at like 35 miles an hour. But if you tried to hit them at 60 miles an hour, yeah, they were pretty shocking. And they have these everywhere, I was shocked. They have these, I think they're a little bit bigger and taller on little roads and, you know, and not quite so shocking on some of the highways. But those I found interesting. But what I didn't see on the list, and I think it was because at the time we were talking about like a multi-use path between connecting Husatonic and Route 7. But. But there's not really, it's not really on there, right? So for a sidewalk, to extend the sidewalk that comes up 183 all the way until Route 7? Am I right about that, Chris?
It was in the report, there was some narrative in the report on it and the challenges associated with it.
Uh, number 15 is Route 183 bicycle accommodation, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, but was it at the time, did we really talk? Yeah, so what, what I was thinking is not bicycle accommodation, what I was thinking more is like, like really a traditional sidewalk. So more for foot traffic, pushing strollers, more as a, like as a multi kind of commute source. Like people that can really ride bicycles, you know, they can get there, like that's less of a big deal. But for people walking or people, you know, people that don't really ride bicycles, you know, they sometime end up on the sidewalk and definitely strollers. And, you know, there's not, it's one of those connective things that we don't have and that some sort of multi-use path would have. Would have provided, but. But now I'm, but now I'm thinking, well, personally, I'm thinking that a sidewalk's a much better idea. And I, I'm, and so that's part of my interest in, uh, maybe starting the process again or starting to think about when we want to start the process again. For Complete Streets is, is that in particular, and then also that sort of thing in other places. I know we have a lot, there's a lot of sidewalk, little sidewalks, uh, projects on this list.
Great.
But, yeah.
Chris, when we went through that process, wasn't there some sort of state influence on the towns going through the process?
They mandated, mandated a certain structure to the process.
Was there a timeframe, in other words?
Was there a timeframe? In other words, kind of being that town sharing a cage every five years?
I don't remember there being a timeframe, so I think it's really up to us. Uh, the select board of, of a couple of years prior had said, this is something we wanna do as a town. They signed kind of a policy or a proclamation and said, we will set up a Complete Streets Committee and we will make this plan. Uh, the master plan set out a Complete Streets goal. It included a funding goal, fifteen percent, I think, ten or fifteen percent of the capital budget. Um, so all of those policy uh, directives were behind this. We got the plan. We have a list, what to work on. But the, as with the master plan, the list could be discussed and revised.
And the, if they're. We got funding, funding just for.
I believe we had Complete Streets funds for uh, uh, consultants to help us develop the plan uh, for the staff needed to develop the plan. Were revised, yeah, yeah.
Jeremy, all set?
Yeah.
Okay.
Also, uh, in the town planners' report, so at your next meeting, which is July thirteenth, um, a CPA plan update would be a good agenda item there. Jeremy, thanks for mentioning that. Uh, also, I will have for you that night a site plan review application for the Lake Mansfield parking lot. It is technically subject to site plan approval. Uh, so I suggest you set a site visit for that evening. Let's say by. Even five thirty. I'll, so if you could hold that time before the meeting, that'd be great, and I'll confirm the time.
Let's tentatively say five thirty at the uh, parking lot.
The thirteenth of July. Thanks, Cindy.
I have one quick question for you. Um, the S God that we overlayed straight for those or in accident land.
Best one ever.
For Windrush, right? If I remember correctly, there were two thresholds by which the town could obtain an incentive from the state. One was when we passed it, I thought. And the other was, was it COs or building permits?
Building permits, and I believe there was no one at the.
Okay, and so have those funds been coming to the town?
Yes.
And are they able to be used for things like the sidewalk improvements? They are, okay. So somebody is on those funds, because I remember when we passed it, I was like, we gotta get those.
Yeah, the town has received smart growth funds. They, they have to be devoted to capital projects uh, because they're usually tied to state capital bill, bond bills. And the state very much likes to see them associated with housing.
We use some to do the sidewalks and roads near uh, uh, the former log home site, the badly apartments, the sidewalks, the roads, those benefited from the smart growth funds. Uh, and we can use some from the South Main Street reconstruction, sure. Uh, we did some sewer upgrades uh, to benefit the housing developments as well as the areas around there. So sewer upgrades, we need, we really need those funds.
But there's funds in the bank still and I think the other incentive has to do with uh, school enrollment. There's a certain payment. Uh, if, if there's a certain number of schoolchildren in those newly occupied units, we get some sort of offset. I think we need a committee first.
All right, anything else from? Okay, do we have any questions from the members of public? Raise your hand if you do and we will unmute you. All right, being no hands raised, hold the jury. Oh. Like a ribbon cutting or?
It's, it's, we can't hear um.
We can't hear.
No.
Um, so Jonathan was saying that he had reached out to Carol Bosco. At the CPC with regard to when there was gonna be a ribbon cutting at Windrush Commons and, and then you heard Pedro say. A week from tomorrow?
So it's. Ten AM?
Yes. When? Yesterday.
Okay, anything else, Jonathan? No? Okay, great. Thank you, everyone. We'll adjourn at ten, at seven thirty-seven.